We wanted to take an opportunity to provide the community, in particular our board, students and parents with information about what is happening related to recent announcement that occurred at the state level that our districts are permitted to operate winter sports, including high-risk sports. Up until now, we have only been operating bowling for our girls and our boys on a virtual basis, but last Friday, this past Friday evening, it was announced that the governor would permit schools to operate what the state has classified as high-risk sports, such as basketball, wrestling, indoor track, cheerleading, and some sports that East Greenbush currently doesn't offer, such as swimming. The criteria established by the state of New York indicates that the county health departments with jurisdiction within the area of a school district really has the final determination as to whether or not schools will be permitted to do this. So, the state's approval is subject to the permission of the county. And during the past several days, Mr. Leonard, our athletic director, and myself have been preparing and planning for the operation of sports subject to the approval of the county. There are some challenges and complications related to the way that the state has approved this option for our student athletes. In our district, for example, we compete in the suburban council league, and our suburban council league is made up of school districts from not just one county, Rensselaer County, but four counties: Schenectady County, Albany County, Saratoga County, and Rensselaer County. And each respective county department of health has to approve the operation of high-risk winter sports in order for our league to fully function. So, Mr. Leonard has been discussing the planning with the respective athletic directors from each of the districts that compete in the suburban council, and I have been in discussions with each of the superintendents of the districts and the suburban council about how we would go about operating our sports in the event that those four respective counties approve them. As of this afternoon, at a meeting I had with Rensselaer County Executive Steve McLaughlin and Rensselaer County Health Director Mary Wakunas, the counties have not resolved their differences regarding whether or not they will approve the operation of winter sports and what criteria they would apply to make that determination. So, there is this agreement among the counties as to whether this will happen and what criteria will be used to determine that school districts are permitted to proceed with sports. The difficulty that I feel regarding this is, as the superintendent, and I'm sure many superintendents feel this way, we want to see our students engaged, and we recognize the importance of engagement for our kids, particularly now as we have been dealing with higher levels of confinement of our students because of the limited social activities. And we have only been able to offer one sport this winter, and we are offering virtual extracurricular clubs, which we believe are important for the students. So, the announcement that sports could happen or might happen, we've got some kids excited about it, and some parents are really advocating for it, and I would like to see the kids out there. However, this determination does not solely rest with the superintendent of the district nor our Board of Education. So, we still have some ways to go over the next few days to know whether or not we would be permitted to offer winter sports. There are some differences in views among our county departments of health. They are trying to reconcile those differences, and we were told this afternoon that there's an ongoing effort to see what could be done. As we read different announcements from different areas of the state as to whether or not they're permitting it, in some cases they are, in other cases they're not. So, as an advocate for the kids, our board will continue to review this matter. We will be discussing it further this evening. And at this point, I want to ask Mr. Leonard to talk about the work that the suburban council athletic directors have been doing, really, since last Friday night. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday through today, the athletic directors have been working on this in anticipation of it happening and what safety and health protocols would need to be in place. I will say before I introduce Mr. Leonard, our fall season went remarkably well, and I could not have been more proud of our student athletes, our athletic director, Mr. Leonard, our coaches, and our parents of the job that we did in East Greenbush School District of operating our sports programs safe. It was a great reflection on everybody within the community. The difference as we move into today, the infection rate is still higher, and that is causing the counties to have concern, and no one was prepared for this announcement that came on Friday. We were thinking we would get through the decline that we're experiencing now in the cases that resulted from the holidays, and most of us were thinking about and hopeful that spring sports would occur. So, this caught the county by surprise and caught the school districts by surprise, and we've been working through it. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Leonard to talk about the development of the guidelines that is occurring right now in accordance with what the state is asking us to do regarding the operation of sports. Mr. Leonard?
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay? Yes, no? Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, it was kind of a bombshell that got dropped six o'clock on, or four o'clock last Friday, and seeing that I had the lovely job of being suburban council athletic director president this year out of all the years, I came back up to school Friday night, and we had a subcommittee. We worked for a couple hours Friday night, Saturday about six, seven hours, Sunday for about 10 hours, and developing guidelines, criteria, duties and responsibilities similar to what we did with the fall. I want to chime in with Mr. Simon said. I'm extremely proud of our student athletes, our parents and coaches this fall. We didn't have any issues. A few other suburban schools, you know, struggled a little bit with a couple teams, but we got through the entire season, and it's a reflection of what type of people we have. So, basically in your packet, you have something called the Suburban Council, International Athletic Athletics Standard Operating Procedures for Winter High-Risk Sports 2021. So, basically, we take all the documentation of New York State interim guidance for sport recreation from NISVA, which is the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, we turn into classic athletics, and as well as some other guidance we research, we see from NISVA, as well as Section 2. So, basically, we put together a kind of a playbook, so to speak, of how our league's going to operate. And I want to, it's very critical that all 15 schools are on the same page. So, if we have teams going to Shen, the same expectations, safety protocols and procedures are the same, whether they come to Columbia, you go to Shen, you go to Shaker. So, that's very critical for the safety, the continuity of the programs. From this fall, I'm not sure if anybody's, you know, we created badges for, you know, two guests, two spectators. We taped our bleachers, we had contact tracers. So, it's the same thing here at Columbia as well as other suburban schools. I'm just going to kind of quickly go through a couple different general considerations. We all use a health screening. So, every single day, a student athlete will come to a practice, whether they're an A student or a B student, or a fully remote student, believe it or not, can participate in athletics. They will get a daily health screening. We have a log, we have a checklist, and they also get a temperature check. They're asked the similar questions, and those logs are handed in to me after each week. We double-check them, and we keep them, and we file them. So, we're doing daily health screenings, which I think is very important. Some other general considerations, masks are always, this winter, except for the sport of wrestling, and I'll get to wrestling, but masks are required at all the time. So, for example, if you're playing boys' basketball, you are wearing a mask all the time. The only time that you wouldn't be wearing a mask was during a play, and the mask is knocked off your face. The play will be finished, as soon as the play is finished, the ball is dead, the whistle blows, that athlete will have to put their mask back on. So, masks are on and up the entire time. And in the fall, if a student athlete or a parent deemed it was not as tolerable, they had the option of pulling it down and putting it back up. Section 2 just came out that if a student athlete feels that it's not tolerable, they now have to provide a medical documentation and provide that to the school why it's not tolerated. I can tell you this fall, we had a great success of our student athletes listening. I went around numerous times right in the beginning and just told the students, if we're going to have success, you're going to have to wear your masks. Took a couple days, but I was proud to watch cross-country meets, soccer games, field hockey, you name it, our kids wore the mask because they realized the success of playing and continue to play was wearing masks. Our coaches did a super great job, and what I like about our winter coaches, that 10 of them coached in the fall, so they're familiar with a lot of the procedures. I'm going to quickly just talk about a couple sports, give some highlights of examples that we came up with. So, for example, in basketball, your basketball, I'm not sure if, I think it's in your packet, but you all, I'm not sure if it's diagram, but that's a diagram I'll be working off of. Basically, we're almost to the NBA, where instead of having a straight long bench of 15 to 20 chairs side by side, they're going to be staggered back in rows, six feet apart, going back, going back. Each chair is labeled. So, for example, if I'm on the basketball team, I have a chair that is named, it's has a nameplate that says Mike Leonard. So, if I am in the game, no one's sitting in my chair. If Mr. Simons is on the team, and there's a chair that says Jeff Simons, he comes in for me, I can't go sit in Jeff Simons' chair, I have to go report Mike Leonard's chair. In my six-by-six cube, I have my water and my personal bag belongings. The score table, normally we have the scorekeeper, the announcer, and the two people that take the book, the home book and the away book. We will only have the announcer and the scoreboard person, and then we'll have to set up side tables for each home and away scorekeeper that are six foot away. We will have now an officials' table that is behind. The officials used to leave their jackets, their water on the score table. That no longer will be. They'll have their own designated table, six feet beyond the floor where they can leave their personal items, their water. Also, on our score table, because it's that sport, there'll be Clorox wipes, extra mask because during a basketball game, we found this out in the fall, you know, a lot of kids, you know, their mask would break, the string would break. We have individual masks wrapped in baggies that we provided, and it worked out great. So, we always have extra masks at practice and at games. So, each coach will receive hand sanitizers, big ones, the small, little portable hand sanitizers, a temperature gauge, baggies, gloves, towels, disinfectant spray. So, all those things will be at every game, and all those coaches have those things. And we have throughout the athletic wing, there's a ton of hand sanitizer station that we've had since the fall. So, those are some of the things, particularly like in basketball. In a basketball game, after the first quarter, that basketball is taken out of the game, and a new clean basketball is brought into the game. And you would do that after the first quarter, second quarter, halftime, third quarter, and obviously at the end of the game. So, you're constantly trying to clean that equipment and turn that over. So, that's just a couple highlights with basketball. In basketball practice, I just want to talk about practice. We had a lot of success within our practices. Our coaches will develop cohort groups. So, for example, they say there's 15 boys on the team. Myself and Jim McHugh would be partners pretty much the whole entire year, and we would be assigned a basket. So, we would, our two will be partners for shooting drills, for defensive sliding drills. So, really, a small little cohort might be me and Jim McHugh. And then another cohort might be, you know, John Don and Mark Mann and another basket. So, this way you can track it, who's together for a period of time. So, you know, we've done a great job of developing small cohorts. Same thing, you know, in indoor track, we'll have groups. So, it'll be all the throwers, all the shot putters. Chris Dietrich's our throw coach. So, he would have boys and girls that throw the shot put together. That's a cohort group. Chris Ozzie does a lot of the jumping events, highlight, a high jump. So, he would have that group as a cohort group. So, it's easy to track those kids are together. Obviously, in basketball, you're going to be doing some scrimmaging, so you'll have an opportunity for those kids that will be together as a whole. When those kids are out of the game, are not in the scrimmage, are not in the drill, they're on the sideline, six feet apart, again, everybody has their mask on. I just want to quickly talk about, we do have ice hockey, it's a merger program with Shaker, Avila Park County, and Tamarack. Right now, all five schools, as Mr. Simon says, are waiting and pending their DOH approval. Mr. Simon's also mentioned that a few county health departments are all into that. So, us in Avila Park and Rensselaer County, Shaker and County, or Albany County. So, that may impact ice hockey. You know, Rensselaer County gets the green light and Albany County doesn't. So, we may, that may impact hockey. Hockey has their own set of rules. They show up to the rink, ready to go, and they carry their skates. 30 minutes before their practice, they change in the skates, and they get on the ice. Nice thing about hockey is a lot of equipment, total face, ball padding. So, there's a lot of protective, and there's also internal face shield. And a lot of them now wear a mask, which they've been doing now for ice hockey inside. So, that's also another protected with ice hockey. Let me quickly talk about cheerleading. All these practices will be spread out for our district using Columbia, Gotham, Green Meadow. Our cheerleading program traditionally has been at Green Meadow, they'll continue to be at Green Meadow. They'll probably go four to seven, 7:30. The JV team will practice. The JV team, or JV coach and the varsity coach will clean the cheerleading mat, and then the varsity team. Same thing, it's a small cohort, it's that group. All cheerleading competitions are virtual. There'll be, hopefully, there'll be four Saturdays, and the county is our league chairperson, and Saturdays will do a virtual cheerleading meet, and the three judges will actually watch our live competition from Green Meadow, and they'll judge it. And some of those things have been going on for quite some time. Again, indoor track, when it's nice out, and it hasn't been too bad of a winter, we're outside, just like we were in the fall with cross-country. We're outside, we're socially distant, masks are up. The track has been cleared, you know, except for today, but for the most part, we'd be outside a lot. If they're inside, it's small cohorts. Like I said, with like the throwers, there'll only be like 20 in that group and 20 in the high jump. That's all that would be in the gym. And maybe another group might be up in the Sunshine Hallway running. So, they're all different groups, the whole track team's never coming together unless they're outside, socially distant, and we could do that. Wrestling, there's a lot of different challenges to wrestling, and I thought we did a great job in this diagram, coming up with a lot of different things. Obviously, with wrestling, it's very difficult to avoid physical contact as well as wearing a mask. But within wrestling practice room, you would have same thing like training partners. You would have one or two training partners. Those partners were the only ones you'd be training the whole entire year. Then, within our wrestling room, we normally have, it's called wrestling circles, and it's part of wrestling. So, what you would do is just spread them out. You would have two to three guys at one circle, skip a circle, two to three guys, so they're socially distant. Again, small cohort group in wrestling. One thing I want to bring up is that not a lot of, a lot of schools are on the fence with wrestling, and a lot of schools feel that a weekly testing is mandatory for participation in the sport of wrestling. I'm not really sure about our capability of testing. In, who would test it? They, the big wrestling guys in our league that are athletic directors thought the morning of a match, they would be tested. It's a quick, rapid test they would take to determine if a positive result comes out or not. Those are some things about wrestling. But we've, like I said, we've been meeting since Friday, Saturday, Sunday, all the time, just trying to come up with a great document, working document, that all the schools and all of our student athletes be on the same page, the same expectations. And I think that's very important, that everybody is doing the same thing, and the standard is the same thing. I'm not sure if anybody has any questions, or Mr. Simons, you need me to cover anything?
One of the things, one of the things I just want to emphasize is, going back to the fall, as we talked with other districts outside the suburban council, we were reminded of how good the suburban council, what a good a job they did. They had the same standards for both teams in place at every contest, and it was very consistent. That was not necessarily the case in some of the other leagues. So, we were really proud of that. I guess, Mike, I'd just like to open up an opportunity for anybody on the board to express their questions or concerns right now, and we'll do our best to try to answer them.
Okay. Feedback from board members? Kathleen?
I kind of hate to be the wet blanket here, but there was a news story on, just at six o'clock, that Albany County has said that their schools will not be participating in the high-risk sports. They have chosen to follow CDC guidelines, which wants your infection rate below 4%. And in Albany County, it's still above 6. So, I don't know, I feel so bad because obviously a lot of work and a lot of thought has gone into this, so I don't know if there's any wiggle room with the counties. I, like I said, that's just what I heard at six o'clock.
At our meeting, at our meeting this afternoon, we were told by Rensselaer County that that 4% index was being advocated for by some of the other counties, and that our county was not in agreement with that. So, we were also advised that they were, they would be working together to try to resolve their differences regarding that, and that we would expect perhaps to hear more information by Saturday. So, what you're, what's being reported is inconsistent with what we said. I'm not, I believe it's probably true, but again, that would, if that is the case, that would affect Gilderlin's participation, Albany City Schools' participation, Shaker High School, North Colony's participation, and South Colony's participation, and Bethlehem's participation.
And CBA.
And CBA. So, those are six schools that if what's being reported is accurate, would not be able to participate in the suburban council. One thing that has been discussed is, could you operate a league or an organization of some kind with the teams that are in the counties that do approve it? And there's a real question about whether or not districts should do that, whether boards would support us operating differently than other districts, and it's still an open question. So, for example, Troy, Avila Park, and East Greenbush are all in Rensselaer County. If Rensselaer County decided that they supported the operation of sports, and they weren't applying a 4% infection rate threshold, could we do something with Troy and Avila Park? And I don't, I honestly haven't fully formulated my own views on that, and, you know, that would allow the kids to participate to some degree, nor do their superintendents know how their boards feel about that as well. But we've talked about the concept, but not in any kind of detail. We were hoping that our county health departments could work together to come to consensus, and it's disappointing, quite frankly, that they can't.
Just to jump back in, if, we're supposed to start this Monday, the first, and it was going to be a six-week season. So, basically, everything except wrestling needs six practices, wrestling needs 10 practices. So, basically, they're going to practice for about a week if we're going to start. We had a, we started working on schedules last night and today, trying to get, you know, 11, 12 games for everybody. Another big question was spectators. We felt as a group of athletic directors, we were going to start with no spectators because it's inside, and we really wanted to get everything going first to ensure safety, to troubleshoot, and then phase spectators in, similar to like, you know, two guests per player, socially distant, contact trace as they come in the door, assigned seating, you know, but to do that right away, we're going to get, you know, the games going. There's a lot of moving parts in a game, and so we wanted to kind of hopefully phase in spectators. Prior to phasing in, we would definitely honor and have a senior night. I think that's important. We would have two guests per player, similar to what we did last spring. I did a senior night, even though we didn't have spring sports, and it worked out great. But I would, I think that's very important to do that. So, say you had four boys that were seniors on the basketball team, I would have eight parents socially distant on the other side in chairs, wearing masks, you know, to do that honor. I think that's important.
Mark? Anything? I saw something pop up on your screen, Mark.
I got a question.
Sure.
Two questions. One is, so if Rensselaer County doesn't give us approval, today's Wednesday, we got Thursday, Friday, and the weekend, we can't start anything February 1st, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And secondly, great plan, Mike, a lot of effort, I appreciate it. I'd like to hear from Paul Bickel on, you know, what is the procedures for cleaning? It's one thing to go wipe down a classroom, you know, now you're talking a large gymnasium and the large wrestling rooms. Have we addressed those? Is that going to involve some extra people? You know, if, what time do these sports end? You know, are we going to have to bring in additional people to work late to disinfect them rooms?
Can you guys? Everybody here?
Yeah, I think, think Paul's out.
Yeah, we call it a little.
Sorry.
Speak up.
Mark, to answer your question, I've been working with Jim Vinburn at the high school. We're looking into options, how we're going to go about this. Right now, we've got, typically, there's a night, or two night people that work the third shift. One of them is pulled up on to the 3:30 to midnight shift right now. So, we're talking about putting him back to the night shift, the overnight shift, to help with the cleaning and disinfecting at the high school. And that we're also going to put another gentleman who works on, who's working Monday through Friday right now, during a normal situation. He actually worked on Tuesday through Saturday shift, so we're going to end up putting him back on that shift, bringing a substitute in to cover on Mondays for him. And we're actually doing a little bit better on substitutes right now. So, we're still kind of playing out the, you know, how we're going to do it exactly, kind of waiting for athletics plan before we react totally. We need to know, you know, when end times will be for sports so that we can, you know, make sure we have the right amount of time built in for the cleaning and disinfecting. So, we are, we are looking into it and following closely and working with the athletics department to make sure that things will be taken care of properly.
Thank you, Paul.
So, for example, Mark, real quick to answer your question, the chairs and the basketball for a game, the JV might play. Last time, Sean Leggett, and we had one of my supervisors, we sprayed down the chairs, cleaned them, and then the varsity came in. After the game, you know, Sean Leggett and one of my game supervisors did it, it worked out extremely well. A lot of other schools are using, I think it's called the, I don't know, the fogger, I guess. I'm not sure if that's the right word, to clean wrestling rooms, weight rooms, if you use bleachers. You know, basketball courts, they just drive the machine, which they do now, the big, you know, it looks like a they do now, the big, you know, it looks like a golf cart, but it's a, it does mopping, it's like a squeegee. You know, he was just down the hallway right now. You would just do that in the basketball court too. And that helps with a disinfected solution.
Yeah, and one, one more thing, if I can just interject, we are in a much better place right now as far as actually having the chemicals we needed to disinfect and having the tools to do it. Um, when we made that large purchase of the, the misters in the fall, those, um, originally we only had one of those in the district and it was at the high school and it was used mainly for athletics because they work great. You can walk into a room and literally just mist everything and disinfect it. Uh, you know, so the, those, now that we have the capacity with those plus the people that we need, I, I don't think it's going to be any issue taking care of the, the bigger spaces for, for sports that do end up opening up.
And then by utilizing Green Meadow, Columbia and Goth, um, and with less levels, the only levels we're looking at having to really do it is varsity and JV for boys and girls' basketball and cheerleading. Wrestling would be at, uh, a varsity level and, uh, indoor track, basically a varsity JV and they'll, they'll do virtual meets as well. Uh, Gillen and Shen have already started some virtual indoor, our indoor track meets. Um, you know, if the track is nice, the weather's nice, they go out and do some hurdles, some sprinting, they time their guys and they kind of compare scores. That's what we do right now with bowling. It's all virtual. So we have a bowling match and then our coach takes our scores and calls up the Shaker coach and they compare scores to who, who was first, second, third, and who won the bowling match. So we did that, uh, we do that now with swimming. We did that, um, in the fall with swimming and, uh, with cross country, we staggered it. They didn't run against other schools. Cross country, our team ran, uh, and then the other team ran in cohorts and we just merged the scores and find out, you know, first, second, third, so on and so forth.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions for, for Mike or, uh, Jeff, Michelle? Go ahead, Michelle.
So, so two questions. Um, first is, do we have any concerns that we're crossing over cohorts? Meaning we got the high schoolers going to the elementary school or middle school to practice? Is, are we, are we nervous about that? Should we try to keep them separated and the high schoolers with the high school? I know we don't, might not have room at Columbia, but I don't know if that causes more risk that we're, might be contaminating an elementary school. Um, and then second of all, and don't shoot me on this, but is there a possibility that we consider testing these kids or mandated testing, uh, the participants weekly or is that not allowed?
I'll answer the second question about testing first and then I'll let Mike talk about the coordination of the schedule and whether or not the kids would be, yes, they'd be using the space, but they wouldn't necessarily be in the building at the same time. The, um, the issue of testing has been discussed both within our Questar superintendent's group as well as along the suburban council superintendents. The type of testing that we're approved to do right now through Questar BOSI's is, uh, specifically licensed to, uh, respond to a designation that we are in a yellow, orange or red zone and not approved for use, um, for, um, for, um, surveillance testing or, or, uh, and we've been trying to navigate through that through Craig Hansen to get some clarity as to how we might be able to use this supply of tests that we've, we've, uh, procured and, um, whether or not it makes sense to do that, uh, on some intermittent basis or random basis as far as sports are concerned. Uh, some districts feel strongly that we shouldn't do it. Uh, some feel that it's a good idea. Uh, I think it's a good idea if it helps, uh, facilitate the engagement of the kids, but we don't have clear direction on or guidance on how we would do that. I raised that issue with the county health department director today. Uh, I, testing was one of the areas that we were told was going to be explored and talked about as a potential option between the counties. And again, that was a meeting at noon this, noon this morning. So I, I'm open to some type of testing if we can do it based on, uh, health department guidance and obviously if it enables the kids to play, because I'd like to see the kids playing. As far as scheduling and intermixing with the elementary and middle school levels, typically we do have practices after the elementary kids are dismissed. Correct, Mike?
Yeah, so Michelle, to answer your question, for example, at Green Meadow, earliest that cheerleading would start at before o'clock.
So we, we won't have time, Mike, to clean the gym to get them ready for it or is that, will that already be done? I'm just worried about the timing of all the cleaning.
I, I, I think they're just going to go to the gym and I'm, I'm not worried about the contamination. They're going to go in, roll that, roll out their cheerleading mats. No one else is going to be using them. The elementary school is not going to be using them and, uh, they'll use their cheerleading mat. And then after the JV practice, they're going to get wiped down, the coaches can do that or spray down. And then after the varsity, they'll spray it down again because you want to put it away dirty. And then they'll roll it, roll it up and place it against the, um, the wall. They would use, the, uh, the team would only use, because you can't have, you know, six people going to the bathroom, they would use the bathroom as kind of near Coach D's office. That would be designated, uh, bathroom for cheerleaders. So this way it's not down around the cafeteria where, you know, little kids might have been or may, you know, I don't know if GCC's even there, but, um, it would be very distant and very spread out and they would have a designated bathroom. Uh, and then this way, at the end of the night, custodian or maintenance can clean that bathroom.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
One of my concerns about testing is would we be able to get more tests if we run out of the supply that we ordered for the, you know, the eventual required testing that we were anticipating? I would want to know that we could be, uh, given sufficient number of, of tests and, uh, to make it, to make it sustainable.
And, and some parents may not want to have their kid tested, but you know, if it was up to me and I could have sports on if I got them tested, by all means, test them.
The concept we talked about was taking the student athletes who are already in the pool of families who consented to the test, clarifying with the families that they want to, uh, that we can go ahead and do it and then, um, moving forward on it. Again, it's, it's having the approval to do it and having sufficient supply of the tests to do it. And how do you do it with direction from the county in a way that it has some validity to it? Um, were, were my questions. But yeah, we're, we're, um, we're not opposed, I'm not personally opposed to that.
And I think a lot to remember is this, this only came out Friday evening as Mr. Leonard said, and we're, we're going to get more information and guidance because there's a lot of districts across the state that are asking the same questions. I, I do want to echo what Mark said about thanking the team for all the work that's been done. I think the section will help out with this. I know that, um, it really, the, the guidance has given the authority to the local health departments, the county health departments. And without those written guidance, you know, I'm all for proceeding based on the success we've had and, but without those approvals in place, we're not doing anything. I mean, I think that has to be clear to the community, unfortunately, that, you know, they, they have now the authority to decide what, how we move forward. Our job is to plan, prep and be ready for when that happens and, um, so we can give our student athletes' families an opportunity to, to participate, uh, as Mike has outlined here. And, and I think the district has done, uh, a terrific job in the fall, as you mentioned, um, tonight about being successful with our sports programs, um, so far this year. And, you know, just thinking back throughout graduation, all the different things we've done, we are, number one is always going to be the safety of our students and our families. And we can make those things happen. We just have to make sure that the, uh, the people who can give us the okay, give us the formal okay and, and we can proceed, um, under that because we don't want to put anybody else in jeopardy either. But it's going to take a lot of cooperation, definitely. Is there any other views that you would be impressed? John?
I just wanted to make a comment that, um, I am supportive of this concept of trying to bring back some normalcy to these kids, um, and giving them opportunities to be active because, um, unfortunately during this pandemic, you're, there, everybody's becoming complacent and lethargic. So, uh, thanks to Mike and Paul and everyone that put this together. Again, we have to just, uh, be mindful that we're here to support the entire, um, education and experience for the students in a safe manner. So I am supportive of exploring this further.
And another comment I want to make, and I think that it's important to make a distinction, school districts as a public agency, a public entity have a, we are held to a higher standard. I know that there are other club, other sports are happening out there, we know that, but they're not under our jurisdiction. Our jurisdiction, um, our oversight come from the state and the local health departments and, and, you know, we have to follow the guidance and, and that, that we are given. And, uh, as much as that is difficult, when we know that other sports are happening in rec and other areas, um, outside the school jurisdiction, um, we still have an opportu, we're duty bound to do the right thing by, by the guidance. So it's a, it's a conflict, I know, for a lot of families who, who want to do this, but, uh, we'll proceed as best we can, uh, once we have clearance and approval and, and the superintendent and the board is satisfied that all the approvals have been met. Thank you, Mike. That, that's somewhat up for folks, all right?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate all the work, Mike. Stay at it. I'm sure things will change and, uh, you'll brief us again, uh, as things happen.
Yes, thank you. Before I leave, I just want to let you know, one of our, uh, former athletes, Selena Lot, scored her 1,000 points at Marquette, becoming the 30th in school history. And that's unbelievable accomplishment by Selena. It's unbelievable in, in, in Marquette's, uh, history. She's the only 30th girls' basketball player to score 1,000 points at college. So thank you, everybody. And by all means, if anybody has any questions, please let me know. Have a great night.
Thanks, Michael.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else, uh, Mr. Simons?
No, I, I, I will reserve any other comments about reopening and the school operation for, uh, maybe the second round.
Okay, second round. Okay, so that, uh, took quite a lot of time, was an important topic to our community, our, our sports folks and, you know, one thing I, I had to also say is that when they open up sports, high-risk sports like this to potentially playing, our folks who do the arts and music, you know, we feel for you too, because I think that is also something that has to be addressed with the guidance to allow not just student athletes, but also our artists or musicians and clubs to be able to do some of these things too, because, um, those, those things that they do are just as important as our athletics. And, and this district has always shown that we're a huge supporter of the arts here at the district, the music programs and other clubs and, um, as well as athletics. So it's a, it's for everybody.
Thank you for saying that, Mike. I know some districts have expressed this concern about consistency of the criteria that's being applied to sports and music. I, I will say that our music department has done a wonderful job trying to find a way to have band orchestra and chorus this year. And if you come to the high school, which we are limiting visitors, but I, they let me in, uh, in the morning, you, and you go down to the cafeteria, our band kids are practicing 12 feet apart with their music stands and their instruments. Then you walk down to the auditorium and our choral groups are spread out in the auditorium and they're singing with their masks on. And then you walk around the corner and you go down to the, uh, some of the music rooms and our strings kids are playing and it's really nice. So we, they found a way and over the holidays, they presented the community with a virtual performance. And so they're doing a great job.
That's great. Yeah, it's always encouraging.